Individual and that will be working closely with Delshaun Flip at Town Hall and also the state to ensure that we're following all the procedures and we're notifying all the close contacts and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to introduce that. On the 20th of August, the state announced some support for districts if they do experience an outbreak. So they have announced that school officials will be able to request a state-sponsored mobile testing unit come to their school. But again, we will be working as if you see the bottom sentence, "School administrators should consult with public health authorities first." So again, we will be consulting and working closely with Public Health Department should a case arise, should multiple cases arise. So we won't be going it alone. The mobile response team could be deployed if these conditions apply. Two or more students within the classroom group develop COVID-19, more than 3% of the cohort or grade develop COVID-19 within 14 days, more than 3% of the school develops COVID-19 within 14 days, and there's evidence of transmission within the school, three or more staff within the same school develop COVID-19 within 14 days, or two or more on the bus develop COVID-19 within 14 days. So these are some conditions when we would be able to request the mobile response team for testing. And my understanding is that mobile response team will test everyone that they determine to be a close contact. Okay. They've come out with some updated guidance, and I just wanted to walk through that as a point of reference so that we're trying to use the same terms all the time. So previous guidance defined a close contact as all students in a classroom would be defined, and they have updated that be defined as those who've been within six feet of distance of the COVID-19 positive individual for at least 15 minutes while the person was infectious. So that's a little different than they had originally come out with, but I will say that is what I have heard consistently, that if you've been, it's not just exposure, but it's exposure without a mask for more than 15 minutes within six feet. So that's what I've been hearing all the way. When a close contact may return to school, close contact may return. So originally, it was if they test negative for COVID-19, are asymptomatic, and wearing a mask. But the updated guidance is all close contacts should be tested, but must self-quarantine for 14 days after the last exposure to the person who tested positive regardless of test results. So that's some updated guidance. And they're not making these things up. They're working with health officials and local hospitals and experts to make these, to come up with this guidance, obviously. Previous guidance for a policy when student or staff may return after COVID-19 symptoms. So a symptomatic individual, originally it was should I self-isolate for 14 days? Updated guidance, may return to school 10 days from the start of symptoms as long as their symptoms have improved and they have been without fever for at least 24 hours prior to their return to school. I will say that I'm a little uncomfortable with the returning at 24 hours, and I would like to stick to the 72 hours that we have in the original document at this time. I've talked about it with Kathy Ryan, and she agrees. We can certainly revisit that in the future. Actually have someone who went home not feeling well today and went, so this was sort of the first test of how we're going to respond, was not feeling well, went, left here at about nine o'clock this morning, went to the doctor, and the doctor got a rapid test which was negative, but was told that the rapid tests are only 50% accurate, which was disturbing. And then got a, I don't know what you'd call it.
A culture?
A culture, so a longer test. It's supposed to get back in three days. So we're asking him to stay home for 72 hours, to be fever-free without acetaminophen or anything for at least 72 hours at this time. That will give him time to get his test results back. But it was sort of the first case where we're really trying to put these things into practice. And it's, again, it's fascinating because I'm not a healthcare expert, and we want to err on the side of caution.
Right.
But we also don't want to establish a precedent where we're keeping students out of school when they could return safely. So...
Well, a student who is already kept home fever-free for 72, and I agree with that, by the way. I think it's a prudent idea. Would they have access to online programming while they're at home for those if they're fever-free and feeling okay?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Yeah. Part of the beauty of the plan that we have is the ability to shift in and out of remote. You know, should an entire grade or building need to shift to remote, those teachers then have the ability to pivot and teach all of those students remotely. So it's, the principals have done a really good job creating the plan.
Okay. Do we want to stop one second and just hash out, make sure we all agree?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
I don't want to put anyone on the spot. Any other questions?
Yeah, any thoughts on the...
Do I agree with the 72 hours or at least until you get your test result back instead of 24?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you feel the same? No questions?
No, I do agree. I think it's a great idea, but I think we've said it a few times. I mean, we really have to ask families and parents to really adhere to that and really sort of be part of the solution and be honest about, be honest about that.
I think it's better to be safe.
And staff, I'm not shaking my finger at the staff member, but staff, same, you know, there's, we're, don't be a hero.
I was going to say, we're on the mentality of hurry back, hurry back, no one say.
There is, yeah. And they want to be here, and they know that the work that they're doing is important, and I understand that. But if you're not feeling well, now is not the time
Right.
to be super brave and come in. So not just kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Where does that, where does the rubber meet the road with that for employees and staff that have sick days and, you know, only a certain amount of sick days to use? And we're asking them to stay home, you know, they're not necessarily saying, "I want to stay home. I want to come to work today." But we're asking them to stay home those extra days out of due diligence, just so everyone knows at home. Is that something that's been talked about in your discussions with the union?
Yeah. There's, there's actually some COVID-related language around sick time, and I'm drawing sort of a mental blank right now on, on the exact procedure with that. But we can't, we can't, I don't want to say that teachers won't have to, or staff won't have to use their sick time.
Sure.
But I feel very comfortable mandating that they stay home.
Yeah.
If they're not feeling well, and if they're without sick days, then perhaps we look at the sick bank. But I don't believe we have really any staff members unless they've had some sort of an outstanding health issue that have used all of their sick days. So...
I hope, I pray that it never gets to the point for, to that point for something COVID-related.
Yeah.
Just hope it doesn't, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Medical waiting room. So if feasible, which is, I almost fell off my chair when I read this one. Schools are encouraged to provide individual students with their own waiting room. I'm at a loss there. I don't know if they think we have spare rooms kicking around, that the COVID thing is already made.
They must not have been to school lately.
Yeah, I don't get it. So we're really struggling to have a room that has a...
Is our waiting room wing?
Oh, right. Yeah. We haven't had those added yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm asking the foundation to begin construction immediately.
Go ahead.
But anyway, that was some updated guidance. Wanted to share that. Thought we'd get a kick out of that. Athletic update. I'm going to ask Dr. Harrison if he would come to the podium and just talk a little bit about what the MIAA and DESI has come up with around sports. Dr. Harrison?
Good evening, I'm going to ask Mr. Graziano to join me.
I just have to step off.
No, come on down. Come on. I'll let you actually have the floor.
Yeah.
Does everyone know Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Graziano.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome back, Mr. Biggins.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Okay. You should have received a handout which really would, we should really start with that because it's a huge change to the fall sports season or the sport season in the state of Massachusetts. This was decided after DESI, the MIAA, and mass.gov were going back and forth as to how we're going to attempt to do sports. So they came up with the first starting date of September 18th, actually, for a fall sports season that would include boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' cross-country, volleyball, field hockey, golf, swim and dive, and fall gymnastics. So Rockland would start with boys' and girls' soccer with a modification that we don't know about yet. They're going to give us modifications on August 31st as to how to play soccer without it being, you know, without it being dangerous to the students, student athletes. Boys' and cross-country are okay, six feet apart, running outside. Girls' volleyball is in question. Golf's fine. We don't do swim and dive. We don't do fall gymnastics. And as you see, football's not offered, nor is competitive cheerleading. Those two are off the board right now because of the contact and the, let me pitch this so I can, okay. So because of the constant contact. They haven't figured that out yet. So what we will offer is a fitness program for anyone that's not involved in athletics in the fall season, and we'll follow the guidelines we did with our summer camp this summer, which went very well. All the state guidelines were covered. And then it goes into, so you'll see there's four seasons instead of three. So then it goes into basketball if we get there, the basketball season, hockey season, swim. Wrestling, they don't think will happen. And then the, the change, biggest change in the state is called a floating season of fall sports two, which they're going to try to include football and fall cheerleading and unified basketball. That's our special needs program that we run every year. There are no tournaments this year, and hopefully that, that fall two is a floater. So if you don't want to do a sport at the beginning of the year, say volleyball. Volleyball is going to be under discussion, in discussion tomorrow with the social league because the athletic directors and principals think that if we have room to move volleyball to fall two, where there's nothing off it except football and cheerleading, it might be a good time to put that sport in that, that block where we would have less students here at school, after school, during this dangerous time, and during our transition that we're trying to still get used to. So I know the principals would appreciate that we're going to have that discussion on moving volleyball. It doesn't affect anything. They'll still have the same schedule. They'll just start on that February 22nd. So that's, that's a, I think, a good idea for all school systems involved. And then it goes into spring, and you'll see it goes all the way to July 3rd, where normally sports would end on June 7th. We offer every, so we'll offer every sport. Nobody's going to miss anything. And with, you know, any hope and people using precautions, the state will stay at the level that now, and we'll be able to get to this point. So we plan on starting September 18th. The league is doing all hybrid, different ones, not the same as us. Everyone's agreed to start their, their sports season on the 18th after school regardless of whether the kids are in school. Most of these will be outside. The kids will report to the fields, and we'll do our sign-ups then and send out an email and a Twitter about how we're going to do our sign-ups. It's going to be completely different because we're not bringing every kid in the building just to sign up, and when we're not, you know, not equipped to that, and we want to socially distance, and we can do it all electronically, and they can give us our, their physicals and pay online, or, and all the coaches, myself, Ms. Patty Penny, and Ms. O'Brien will handle the, the sign-ups. But you guys have a bigger task than, than I do. School is most important, keeping the kids safe. We're just lucky and we're glad they're going to give us this opportunity to try this. And I, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we get all four seasons in for the kids. They missed a lot last year. Does that cover everything? And we'll take questions.
I had two things.
Yes.
Good evening. Just two things. With the proposal of fall sports starting on September 18th, I think it makes sense to also include extracurricular activities in that. I would ask that the proposal be that extracurricular activities similarly to sports are held outdoors. So we stick to outdoors. We follow similar guidance as athletics in terms of adhering to modifications. But I think if you're going to have sports in the fall, you should also try to have activities such as art club, as much Veritas, the yearbook. They can just do it outside. If for some reason it can't be done outside, I'll work with the advisor to try to make an accommodation for indoors. The second piece is I'd like you to vote on the fact that fall sports would start on September 18th because we're starting the school year remotely. Schools that are starting remotely really should have a school committee vote. We're transitioning to hybrid on September 28th, but since we're starting remotely, there should be a vote from the school committee. It's recommended to start sports prior to the start of in-person learning. So that would be the vote for September 18th.
And if you want to, we have, we have other, another meeting scheduled, so if you want to table that so you can ask questions, I never like to ask the committee to vote on something that they haven't had a chance to at least think about unless you want to talk about it now and you're comfortable with it. That's up to you, but...
And Alan, we're happy to share the guideline document that we used in the summer that was created by my wife, not me, as John Harrison said. He said, "You did not do this document." I said, "No, my wife did. She's a lot smarter than I am." We took the mass.gov forms and we did a nice document that was shared by other social league towns. They did their outdoor activities that way. It really does cover everything. So the extracurriculars don't have to come up with their own document. We'll just give them what we have, and they'll have to have the kids adhere to those.
Okay.
So we have no problem with that. So it could be a school-wide form.
Okay. Donna, when's our next meeting?
The 14th.
Fourteenth. If we had to vote on the 14th, is that early enough?
You, we would need to start registrations before then is the challenge. It would be hard to start registration.
We might need another meeting before then, but unless the committee, again, you want to discuss it.
Why don't we hash out questions, and we'll go from there.
I have a question. Just to confirm, on the form, it says the 14th, but you were saying the 18th.
Yeah, they changed it to the 18th.
Okay. So Friday, the 18th. Okay.
That's the first eligible day to start.
Mr. Biggins, you have one?
Yeah, just a couple, I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Just for clarity for people at home, for the fall sports, they're going to be starting out and when kids are coming in with uniforms and equipment and cleats and things, how is it going to be handled with locker rooms? Are locker rooms going to be unused, or are kids going to be bringing things straight out to the fields, or what's the plan for that?
Right, right now, the discussion we've had with Dr. Harrison, myself, is even though the state is saying 50% in the locker room, we are going to continue to discuss that because we're fortunate to have a boys' locker room high school, boys' locker room middle school available at the school. I can separate what teams we run, keep them the fewest in the locker rooms that meet the 50%, if they need to. For instance, Danny Kimball, the soccer coach, said, you know, Grauz, we can just get the kids at the field from home. They won't enter the school. They'll go to the field, bring their stuff. That's not an issue. I don't anticipate it being an issue for cross-country, and it's certainly not going to be for golf.
Great.
So that covers everything. The only thing we would have, the locker room supervision and keeping the numbers down is with our girls' volleyball team. But we discussed we're, we're going to keep two teams together and not, and not run three programs. That would be impossible to monitor. So we're going to have two, but the coach said she thought two would cover everybody, and we wouldn't be cutting anyone. So that's what we've discussed with all the locker rooms.
Is that 50% now? But I, I don't know if it's a good idea yet. We're still...
Yeah, still waiting.
You might have an opinion.
No, I was just curious. Just, just curious if people listening at home.
That's the same.
Yeah, great. Okay. And then my other question is for the sports that are in question, whether or not they're going to be able to play or not. Are they still going to be able to, you know, practice physical fitness? There are some things like for soccer and for, for, you know, field hockey that they're going to be able to still practice even though they're not within sort of the, for sure, as you go.
Art school?
Yeah.
Yeah. So who's missing out would be cheerleading and football for the fall, and we're going to offer, Mr. LaCory will run what we ran this summer. For anybody that wants to, girls' cheerleading and football players would still have something to do after school. We don't think it's a good idea for them to just leave school and go home.
What I mean for like for soccer, where, for soccer, where the nature of soccer is a lot of times you're within six feet, you know, you're getting...
Oh.
Maybe drills.
Yeah, drills, things like that.
We don't know what soccer's going to be able to do yet.
Yeah.
The, there's committees that are going to report to us on the 31st. For example, they had come out with these ideas so far. You can't head the ball. There's no throw-ins. And it'll be like a neutral ball because, and there's no contact. So if you have contact, you get a yellow card. Two yellow cards, you're out of the game. That's what they've given us so far, but they're trying to work with that. That's really not soccer.
Yeah, right.
So it's just like a neutral, that, which that means if someone could take the ball and go all the way up the field if nobody can touch them and just shoot.
Right.
Sounds crazy.
So we threw that out at the committee, and they're like, "Yeah, we better rethink this." So I really can't answer what soccer's going to look like or volleyball.
Sure.
They're saying they maybe, they're mandating masks for both. Right now, it's, once the kids are in activity, they can take the mask off. They have to wear the mask on the bench and in the building and stay six feet socially distanced, each team.
Thanks. Thanks. My, my only, my comments are just, hey, I just feel bad for these kids. You know, I mean, there's a lot of great athletes and hard workers that we have that we're looking forward to a big senior year, a big breakout junior year, and it really stinks for those kids not to be able to, you know, have the normalcy of sports and the social, in the social experience of sports going forward. So I guess my comment would be to those kids who normally would be playing football in the fall or, you know, be getting ready for normal soccer is just keep working at home. If you, you know, keep working hard, keep getting better. I mean, whether it's going to be a season or not, if you love football, if you love whatever sport you're doing that is disrupted, just keep at it. Your day will come. I promise you. Just keep at it. And thanks for, you know, the positivity that you guys keep going with. And man, I hope these kids get to get out there on these fields and courts. I really do.
I hope this works.
Yeah.
I do. Especially, they've missed so much.
Yeah.
I feel so bad for the seniors last spring.
Yeah. That being said too, I mean, not last, my last comment was, given everything going on, I know we typically, you know, Ms. Chairman, I don't know if you're comfortable or the other members of the committee are comfortable with it. I'd be happy to, on my end, to vote on this tonight. I know time is a bit of the essence for sign-ups and getting everybody on. So I, I mean, I'm comfortable with this as of now, and if, if, if anybody else doesn't have questions, I'd, I'd move that we accept it.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Do you, Ms. Hennessy?
I have no questions.
You have no questions. So I'm assuming there'll be no bus, after-school bus or any busing because they'll be just getting dropped off from home to here, so it doesn't affect anybody trying to get on a bus and all of that?
Yeah, we never provide that anyway.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I'm assuming does this, how does this affect their scholarships and things like that? I mean, it's not, it's out of our hands, so the kids won't lose a scholarship because they don't qualify, or how does that all work?
Well, they're, they're discussing, well, say for instance, football, soccer, basketball.
Right.
Soccer, football first because we're not even at basketball yet. They're saying that if a kid is getting recruited, they're going to go by their junior year performance right now if there's nothing this year coming up.
Okay.
So, you know, Division II and I is scholarship money. Division III is, is just, you know, for the fun of playing. But that's what they're, they're doing, and they're addressing that mostly with, in the NCAA, and how they're contacting the ADs, and they'll give us a form as to how they're going to change that recruiting process.
Okay. They just didn't want those kids to miss out or have their, reflect how they played this year as opposed to when they really got to play last year. Okay. I think that's all I had.
I have a question, a building on her bus question, Jill, that you had. In terms of away games, will it still be no busing to away games or...
You can fit 24 on...
24.
On the larger-sized bus. I contacted the bus company. I know you have all contacted them. They're, they're nervous about having the amount of drivers they need really just for school, never mind sports. So if it's a large bus, it's 24. If it's a regular-sized bus that they offer us, it's 17. If there's siblings on the team, that doesn't count, I guess. So we're still working through that. But we might be sending two buses. I'm shuttling a bus. If we're playing at Abington for girls, we'll just shuttle the bus over.
Okay.
And they'll clean between the runs.
Gotcha.
So that's as far as I've gotten with the buses, and that's kind of a nightmare.
Right.
Right.
Could have potential cost impacts and stuff like that, yeah.
Well, that's what I was thinking. And then now you're spinning into what can't you afford because you've got more buses than you need to. It's a whole thing.
I'm really nervous that the bus company is going to have trouble. Well, there's two things we're nervous about. The referees not wanting to participate.
Right.
The soccer referees as a whole are, we don't have 100% of them, nearly 100% of them willing to participate in working. And the bus company providing enough buses and bus drivers for teams all over the social, South Shore to go where they're supposed to go.
Okay.
When it first started, it was parents are going to drive them.
Right. Which we know isn't normal.
You know, I don't know if we can put that on them, but, I mean, we have such a burden now financially. I don't know, you know, it's, it's still, I guess we'll have discussions between John and Alan and myself and Ms. Felizzi.
And, and no change to the fees, right?
No, yeah. And, and again, we're always, you know, if a family, you know, says to me they can't afford it, we don't, we have never told anyone they couldn't play. And I understand that's as, as prevalent now as ever.
Right. And with no football and cheer, there's no band? What's the band?
No fans at the games because we're still at 50.
What will I do on Friday nights?
Maybe a soccer, maybe a soccer game, but if volleyball's indoors, we're not allowing anyone, no one's going to allow anyone, any outsiders to come in and watch the games.
Okay. And what about the marching band? They're not the band itself?
Mr. Piazza's planning to do stuff with the students outside after school hours.
Okay.
I don't know if, like Mr. Graziano said, maybe at a soccer game, but...
Right.
He's planning to do a lot of work with the kids after school hours outside.
Plenty of space. Right. I didn't want those kids to miss out either. My gosh. I'm okay as well to vote. Are there any more questions before we move forward, though, and we're all comfortable to vote tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Dan, you started with your motion.
Yeah, I'm motioning to approve.
All the second.
All those in favor? Hi. Okay. And we are motioning to approve as well the start of the 18th.
18th is approved by you.
May I ask before you go, Gary?
Sure.
You've seen the kids coming in for their workout sessions and so on. Honestly, how are they doing with social distancing?
The summertime, you know, and I had talked to John about this. I think high school kids are going to be more difficult. You know, some of them don't take it as serious. I sat at the door every morning. You have to have a mask on to come in. You can go into the gym. Once you're settled, you can, you take your mask off. It was very difficult to control. Outside, you know, there wasn't as much of an issue, but the things we had to address was, you know, they're not supposed to, you know, high-five each other after it. And they're, it's a, we have to condition them now that they're not going to be shaking hands afterwards, right?
Right.
But then somebody brings it up. If you're watching the NHL now, they win a game, they all attack each other and hug each other. And the kids are watching the same thing, and we're trying to condition them that the kid just did a great thing, like, you know, 50-yard run. Don't go up and high-five them and say, "Boy, you did that great."
Right.
So we, Nick LaCory's constantly out there. We had four, four coaches, but monitoring them coming in, as I said to John, it's going to be a little bit more difficult than we think. You know, kids are kids, and...
Kids are kids.
I'm glad you asked that, Alan. It's a reality.
Yeah. Just reinforcing to them that it's, it's for, it's so they can protect their season. If they really want to play, they, you know, following the rules is really important. If they get a case or two on their team, they're done.
Right.
Now, and I'll, but I'll tell you, Coach Mitchell, when I go into volleyball or her basketball program, Coach Mitchell had another coach with her. There was no more than 12 to 13 girls. She's sitting up on the bench, and she's going like this. And I took a picture of her. I said, "You're doing exactly what you're supposed to do."
Right.
They know this is like serious. And she, you know, she didn't take her mask off to, to, leave her mask off to run the drills or tell them what they're doing. Pull it down and blow the whistle, blow the whistle, go. I said, "That's what you, they have to see how serious we are."
Right. Right.
And, and they did that.
And the more we sort of make it normal, then they make it normal.
We were there for five weeks. We didn't have any issues. No one's reported anything.
Good.
And we would have known by now.
Right.
So it was successful as far as I can tell.
And they're giving you guidelines as far as protocols in case there is a case or what? Yes, I'm assuming they're doing the same as they are.
We follow what, what John has written.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, those are, those are all spelled out. We just have so many documents to decipher. If a kid's not, that's going to be before, if a kid doesn't feel good, he doesn't go to practice.
Right.
Same as school.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Are other towns in the South Shore participating in the same schedule?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is a state schedule that everyone has to adhere to. They can't, the only option is to not do something in one of these seasons and move it to fall two.
Are any towns opting out in the area?
The only ones opting out are out in western Mass are opting out of sports until January 15th. The western part of the state, they're district. Our district is District Nine. And the, the east, eastern part of the state, north and south, are not opting out of this. I haven't heard of anybody else except maybe someone not starting sports until January 15th. Not a lot, but I've only heard one school, and that wasn't confirmed. That was a school down the Cape. That's going completely remote. Monimoy High School, I think.
Remote for school, why would they...
Completely remote. They didn't have any plan to come back.
Right. Right.
I think it was Monimoy, which used to be Harwich.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate the time.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
So my final point in my extremely long superintendent's report is just, we're excited to welcome our new teachers this Wednesday. Time marches on, and here we are welcoming our new, new faculty and staff to the district. So I just wanted to share that. Looking forward to welcoming them on Wednesday already. And the topics that we cover with them on day one, just a general welcome, we talk about payroll, we talk about how to use X2. how to use X-two, equipment with Tim Wells, technology integration with Lisa Ryan and Janice Kemp, and then Alice overview with Kathy Paulding and SRO Ethan Schnebel. We'll go over evaluation and then they'll meet with the union at two. So a full day for them. Just wanted to highlight that as it's exciting, always exciting to welcome new faculty and staff to the district because they're bringing in their experience or their lack thereof. So hopefully to make up for experience, they have enthusiasm, but they bring a lot to the district. So it's nice to welcome, welcome the new faces.
How many do we have?
Oh, that's a great question. Donna, any idea how many we have this year?
Seven.
Seven.
Excellent.
Right.
All right.
That's a good little number.
Yep.
I just have a question. The DESI guidance.
Yes.
The colors, this is base, is this in accordance to the map that the governor released?
Yes. So every day, if you go to the dashboard, the DESI dashboard, yeah, that's what it's based on.
All right.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kron. Moving on to our monthly reports. So we have, Ms. Bond has her report and Margie Black in Guidance, the director, has her report. I think they look great. Thank you for putting those together.
Two motions. Second.
All those in favor?
Three, right?
Three? I have two.
Um, there is an adjustment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's adjusted one. Okay, good.
Okay. I'm like, oh, oh, here we go. All right. All those in favor were four of us, correct?
Yes.
Moving on to the financial reports. These were just right, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we have school department, the high school student activities, the middle school student activities and the daycare. And I think these also looked well. Thank you for taking the time to put them together for us.
Four motions to accept.
Four seconds.
All those in favor? Okay, that's the four of us. Moving on to old business. The revised calendar of 2020 to 2021. And we have our copy, our new copy?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
No, can, you just explain maybe to the public the, how the twelfth and the nineteenth of October are back-to-back days.
Cohorts and the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth of January.
Right. So we're trying, because we're, we're assuming we're going to be in a hybrid model, we're trying to even out the school days for each cohort. So that allows us to have a four-day week for both cohorts.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to accept.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the COVID language. This was in our last meeting and we tabled it and we're bringing it back tonight. So it is the handbook language for COVID-19.
And Colleen, I think you had, I mean, sorry, Ms. Full Lizzie, I think you had something.
Yeah, I can now speak to it in the evening. I think the question that the students were not having personal belongings in the middle school and high school stores up there. So the elementary are self-contained classrooms and the teachers there, they didn't have their, having their, whatever they did with the classrooms to store their belongings. The middle school and high school are changing classes and were not using lockers. So they must keep their personal belongings with them. Whether it's a small cinch bag or a small backpack, they're going to try to keep it in a small classroom, but they will keep their belongings with them from class to class.
In that way, there's sort of less contamination, everything is. Can we not hear you? Can she not be heard? Did anyone hear you at home?
Raise your hand.
Should she say that again? Yeah, why don't you say that again?
Sorry.
Good evening. So the question last time was, why is the middle school and high school not having a place to store their personal belongings within the classroom? The elementary schools are self-contained and the teachers can provide any area for the students to keep their self belongings, whether it's in a cubby or by their desk or someplace within the classroom. The middle school and high school students change classes, not too many classes, but they change. So they will keep their belongings with them because we are not using lockers. So whether it's a small cinch bag or a small backpack, we're going to ask, ask the students to keep it little so they can carry with them from class to class, anything that they have brought with them for the day. So no lockers in the middle school and high school.
Perfect. I think that makes perfect sense. Any other questions? Nope. Do you, Jamie?
No. Motion to accept the COVID language in the notebooks.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, that's the four of us. Moving on to the program of studies for the high school. Again, this was on our last meeting and we tabled it to have a second look. So we're bringing it up tonight. Any questions on this?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, we're almost in a flow, ladies and gentlemen. All right. We already did the athletic fall sports update. The request for approval for a fundraiser. Here we are. This is like reality. Class of 2023 is doing a mask lanyard sale for August through October. They are hoping to raise about $200 and it's the class officers that are making, to sell beads and cloth lanyards that holds masks around your neck when taken off.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. It's definitely jumping in and taking advantage of the situation for a fundraiser. So, motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Way to be forward-thinking. And then the surplus, Ms. Bond has her list of surplus goods. Looks like lots of books and things that are on here. Do we know if this gets recycled or donated?
That's a great question. Donna, any idea what we're doing with the stuff that Ms. Bond is surplusing? I would assume honestly that some of it gets recycled, just gets recycled.
Just by the nature of what it is?
Yeah.
I was just curious. Okay. We have entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Now we're moving on to personnel information. Dr. Kron, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. Any questions? No?
No.
Okay. Actually, now that I think about it, obviously there's turnover and resignations
and stuff that are happening through the summer. Are they because of COVID? Do we know?
I'd say a few of them are. Yeah, a few of them are for sure. Yeah.
All good. We put out too, for the people that we thought we might be laying off or furloughing, we sort of gave them a heads up. So some of these people could have been some of those people. But it's sad to see you go. Thank you for your time and welcome to any of those that are joining us. I felt that I should swing the other way there. All right. And then we move on to public service announcements and for the camera, I'm going to go in a straight line. So I'll start with you, Mrs. Hennessy, and I'll go to Emily next.
I guess just enjoy the last bit of summer and hopefully everyone was excited about their cohort and teacher assignments that got posted today. So hopefully you got emails from your principals and were able to access AVSPIN. I know it was pretty exciting in our house. Lot of texts between who's in what cohort and who got what side. And just, I guess, enjoy the rest of the summer and have a safe and happy Labor Day.
Perfect.
I almost said the Fourth of July. I wish it was true.
Let's start all over.
But it's the Labor Day.
The parents at home might, you know, jump ship if you're going to have them even longer. Emily?
Um, I would just like to say thank you to everyone at McKinley School that worked with Dr. Kron to get the program up for students and families for their off-week of hybrid learning. And if you have any questions, reach out to your school principal to sign up. They're offering a classroom there for remote learning for everyone.
Did you get the number? How many?
No, I did not get the number.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six?
Eighty-six.
Wow, impressive. That's very exciting.
And thank you to the town for working with us so closely on that. We were able to use three classrooms that, that are not being used to expand the program to include grades five and six for those families. It's huge.
It is huge. I love that we all work together, this whole town now is finally a big team effort for everything, especially now when we all need to be. So that is great. Is that all you have?
Yes, that's all I have.
Mr. Biggins?
Thank you. Puruspera et Astra, through adversity to the stars. Buckle up, everybody. It's about to get bumpy. I think we all know that. I think this is going to be hard. It's been hard for everybody, turning over all the rocks and trying to figure out and anticipate all the challenges that might be coming our way, both from the school end, the family end. And I think we've all done our very, very best to, to try to make a bad situation as tenable as possible. But we, we can't lie, it's going to be hard. It's going to be hard for all of us. It's going to be hard for teachers, it's going to be hard for kids, it's going to be hard for parents. The best I can say is let's just try to be positive. Let's try to be understanding of each other. Let's be understanding of our kids when they come home and they're grumpy or they don't want to get on their Zoom call. Let's be understanding of, you know, our teachers when they're trying to get on Zoom calls and it's not what we're used to. Let's just try to attack this with some positivity and understanding all the way around because we're all in this together. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank the principals and the team that has been working so hard to get us to this point. They are certainly working under a tremendous amount of pressure. And now today, everything went out and now I'm sure they're getting lots of emails with questions and just confusion. And I just want to shout out to them, thank you for your effort. We appreciate it as a town and as a school committee. But I flipside, want to say to parents, it is super confusing with what we're all trying to go through this year. Don't hesitate to email them and ask them any question. Don't walk into this with any confusion or hesitation because if you don't email, you're not going to find out. And we'd, we'd rather you know and get the answer and feel more comfortable. So please don't hesitate to ask. I want to remind everyone, the summer reading, I know in the Maroni household, it is not complete. The reading is complete, but the project is not. So we were gained a couple more weeks to get that done. Supply lists went out on Facebook. If you didn't, and I believe home through emails, if you didn't get one, certainly reach out for that as well. And like Jamie said, the cohorts through Aspen all went out today. I did want to explain the house in the middle school. So as a middle school mom, I have a seventh grader, she is in cohort B because we are Maronis. She is in house one. So her orientation would be on Thursday at eleven forty-five to one o'clock. So it's not by, it's, she is on seven A, but it's not, it's grade and then cohort and then house and then the day and the time. The house is because they are moving around in groups of twelves. And to have one parent and one student in the group of twelve, we would then have twenty-four and we would have too many. So they had to break it up to six students with six parents and that's where the house is. House is only good for orientation. So I think it added more confusion today, which there was an email sent home explaining just that. It has nothing to do with Harry Potter. But I know myself, I read it, I went right to seven A and then I got all mixed up myself. So Ms. Bond, when I spoke with her, she did send out an email ahead of me speaking to her and had it all mapped out. Again, if there's any questions, certainly reach out and don't hesitate. And I think that's all I had. Enjoy the last few weeks of summer. I feel like it, it went fast. Even though they've been home since March, I still enjoy my, my summer days and no sort of schedule. Is that all I, that's all I have? Anybody else?
No.
No? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna say it this way because we have to get into executive session. So I will entertain a motion to, to conclude the regularly scheduled school committee meeting in order to enter into executive session for the purpose of union negotiations. Ms. Hennessy?
Motion.
You would say yes.
Sure. First time for this, yes.
Now we gotta make a motion and a second and vote to conclude the regularly scheduled.
Thank goodness, Mr. Biggins is here. Say it again?
Motion to conclude the regularly scheduled school committee meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay. And then now we, now I say it, okay. Now we make a motion. No, I poll the committee?
Right, no, you, no need to poll the first one, just to vote.
We need to vote on the first one.
Motion and a second, we did. All those in favor? I'm so sorry, people at home. If you don't do this right, this is when we get slapped with the wrong thing. And now I poll. Mrs. Hennessy?